Good afternoon, everyone. This is a scheduled September 24th edition of the Atlanta City Council's Finance and Executive Committee. I'm Howard Shook, Chair of the Committee Vice Chair Juanz. To my right, your left, we have Dustin Hillis with us. We have Jason Winston with us. So that makes a quorum, so I'm calling the meeting officially together. The others will be in shortly. And I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Second by Juanz, let's open that vote.
Vote is closed.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of prior meeting. Second by Juanz, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
Minutes have been adopted. That takes us to public comment time. We have Erica Judah signed up. If you're here, we're ready to hear from you. Yeah, come on up. And you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
All right. My comment is straightforward. We can all agree that it's important to breathe in and out, and we cannot separate the difference of those. What I've observed over the financial service industry that I've worked with for over a decade is we get so busy and we ignore our health. And I want to comment today on that. While we're talking about wealth and finance, it is important that we also create budget and time to pay attention to our physical health. That is the comment I have today, and also to thank you for the opportunity to come out here today.
Well, thank you. All right. Takes us to presentations. You have been given a COVID-19's fund report. That's in handout form. And then we have a live presentation from procurement. You all have copies, so if you're ready, Commissioner, take it away.
Good afternoon, everybody. So as we usually do, starting off with the totals from June 13th of this year to, I think, yesterday, maybe the day before. So we've had 43 total solicitations. 24 of those were IFBs, seven RFPs, nine specials, one sole source, two piggybacks, no emergencies, three cancellations. We've processed over 5,300 purchase orders, and the purchase order spend so far is $824,000. Is that a million dollars?
Yeah.
I'm questioning, million dollars? CFO, does that look right to me? Here are the numbers of what's been happening in terms of RFPs. We're making a little bit of progress on getting the cycle time down. 318 average days for now. I think we were at 385 in the prior report. 59 average days for IFBs. We've been doing a lot of work in terms of training our teams, helping them understand that no exceptions process in terms of negotiating, and that's really what's showing up here. A lot of the RFPs and IFBs, quite frankly, but particularly the RFPs, they do take longer. They got started ahead of this process, so not all of them can benefit from the work that we're doing now. In terms of alternative cycle times, no emergencies, as you saw on the total. So what we're looking at now is just the few emergencies that are in flight right now. They haven't been completed. Right now, they're averaging about 32 days. Nine specials, or I think it was seven specials, were averaging nine days. On the sole sources, we had one, and that is taking a whole lot longer due to the nature of the sole source, right? It is the only source per the code. We do negotiate with that sole source, and because they're the one and only, it's usually a pretty tough negotiation to get what we want. So that's still ongoing, or that has just completed very recently, but that was 150 days. On the piggybacks, which are one of the forms of cooperatives, we're averaging about 48 days for the ones that are in flight. That seems to be a little higher than where we have been. We hope to be able to go ahead and curtail those sooner rather than later. But the numbers are, by and large, going down. And here's how we will continue to improve. We've been talking a lot about best practices in the Department of Procurement and getting aligned on the core elements of successful sourcing. I think I've mentioned to this body before that this really is not new news in the industry. It's just we've started to adopt them here at the city, and we do hope that it will make the difference that I believe it actually will make. These are planning and preparation. We need to spend a whole lot more time upfront, planning the procurement projects, including stakeholder engagements with our suppliers, market research, crafting clear and concise requirements, getting that scope defined, using plain language in it so everybody knows what we're talking about, what we're looking for, choosing the right solicitation method, you know, definitely using a more strategic approach as we move forward on procurements. Let's entertain the contract value, the urgency, as we select the appropriate method. And certainly, we will need to stay in compliance with the city code regulations. And then post-solicitation review and feedback, getting vendors debriefed, those vendors that did not win the award on a particular solicitation, making that available, and continuous improvement all the way around. Everything from refining SOPs, continuing to refine processes, and future solicitation This is an eye chart. I know it, but I wanted to introduce to you guys the streamlined procurement process flow. We are coming out of a situation where there was 100 steps, literally 100 steps, to do procurement. And so it was incumbent to corral 100 steps. And this is what we've done. So the teal part is really the pre-planning process. We move through that process into validating the funds before we move into the gray area, which is the actual implementation of the sourcing process. We've got that yellow box down there to leave room for the Ipro process, and then the legislative process that must go on. From there, we begin the contract management process, which is signing, getting all the city signatures on the contracts, debriefing those suppliers that wish to be debriefed if they were not the winners, and then continually just maintaining that contract management process, as well as supporting the supplier performance tracking process as well. That all feeds into a continual process on the procure-to-pay through Oracle that we all know well. So what have we been doing? A lot of training. We recently had, not so recently anymore, a three-day marathon with the Department of Procurement that was held end of July, beginning of August, where we rolled out this process, the new 23-step process, explained how it all kind of comes together. We got very good feedback from that three-day marathon process, where some 95% of the employees are feeling much better in terms of having the tools and resources needed to perform their roles effectively. We also had three days of stakeholder training, where we spoke with all of the agencies and the agency representatives that handle the procurement process, also got some very good comments from them. People are excited about where we're going. They appreciate the collaborative process in the beginning especially, but the collaborative process is throughout, you know, within reason with respect to the blackout period. But overall, very good comments, and I think everybody's ready to move into this process. It actually has launched beginning of August for DOP to get ready, and now it's launched across the city as we start new procurements. We'll go through the new procurement process. And not to forget about our suppliers. We have refreshed the atlsuppliers.com. Certainly, a wonderful message from the mayor there. And we built in, that process that was in the teal included two early engagement aspects that we will do with suppliers on every new solicitation. That is, we're bringing back the old pre-advertising notices. Not sure why those sort of went away, but it is an opportunity to let suppliers know very early, before we're in the solicitation process, what the city is planning to do, kind of get that interest moving early. The federal government uses both of these forms of early engagement quite frequently. The federal acquisition regulations encourage early engagement. And, you know, the hope is, and I believe best practices show, that this early engagement process really does merit a better process and a more successful procurement at the end. You get what you are looking for by having the suppliers give input early on in the process before you've started any solicitation. So after that pre-advertising notice, we'll be doing pre-solicitation conferences, which is where we will share with the suppliers what's going on, what we're thinking in terms of the scope. It's an opportunity for the city, really, to use the conference as a form of RFI to get comments on the scope, so that we know that we're in the right direction. All of this really is done publicly, transparently, so we don't have the issues that we would have if we were doing a RFI in the midst of a solicitation. All of this is pre-solicitation. The other issue is, it helps us really validate that scope, which is something extremely important. My observation has been, we don't, we get slowed down extremely by 200 questions. I saw one recently, 410 questions. 410 questions, which says, obviously, your scope wasn't clear. It wasn't clear to the audience that you're trying to do business with, right? They don't understand. So if they've got to come back with a million questions, that's time lost. You haven't procured anything while you're trying to answer those questions. So these processes will help us hear from them in terms of innovation, things that the city might want to consider in a scope. We will go back to the drawing board. If we believe that those things are what we need, we will answer the questions inside the scope, so that once we procure or in the solicitation process, we hopefully are avoiding 410 questions. That's the whole point of this. And we've got a couple of new additional features for the suppliers. I think I told you guys last time, we were working on streamlining our solicitation templates. We have successfully done that. They're much shorter in length, much clearer in terms of instructions. And a great part about what's coming for the templates is, in working with Deloitte in our Oracle system, we will be able for our suppliers to respond right into the system. So today, you have to download that solicitation, prepare your response, upload it all back into the system, hopefully by that 2:00 PM deadline on that closing date. Now, the solicitations will not have to go in and out. They can respond right there in the system. DOP will get their full response, which makes it easier for DOP as well. We don't have to do as much uploading and downloading as well. So this should also hopefully speed things up a bit. Lastly, for everybody, but mostly for our suppliers, we have refreshed, as I said, atlsuppliers.com with all the features that we just talked about. Here's the look of it. We're going to be adding to this website certain things that we want to feature over time, and let the public and our suppliers know about what's coming. But our site now is much more interactive for suppliers, which we're hoping they appreciate. And that's it for me. I've got the marathon picture up because we feel like we've been running a marathon. I certainly do, ever since I came down in January. So thank you, and I'm now open for your questions.
Thank you. We've been joined by members Bakhtiari, Amos, and Oberstree. You know, rather than a marathon, it seems to me like you're sort of trying to upgrade a race car in the middle of the Indy 500.
Yes.
I know you can't pull into the pits and do it, unfortunately.
That's right.
Questions, comments? Mr. Juanz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CPO. Appreciate the presentation. Just a couple of questions. First off, on your statistics slide, there were three cancellations. Can you tell me a little more about the nature of the reasons for those?
I unfortunately don't have that information with me. I can get that information to you, though, straight away.
Okay. That'd be helpful. Does always make me a little nervous, but I'm sure there was a good reason, and just didn't know if there was anything in the tea leaves on that one. Second thing has to do with the competitive sourcing cycle times. Appreciate the downward movement, but I just wanted to at least note that I'm nervous about 318 days for an RFP because of, yeah, I mean, I don't know why in my mind. I have six months in my mind, 180 days being a good manageable timeframe for the users as well as the outside world. But, you know, I know last time we talked, you weren't, you were a little reluctant to commit to a target, but I'm guessing this is still, in your mind, even too high, right?
Extremely too high, if I may say. Absolutely. And, you know, the RFPs that are going through the system are those RFPs that were still out there for 300-plus days. And so we're trying to finish those. Unfortunately, they started the way they started, and we just have to complete them. I would like to complete them because I want to move on to the new thing. And while I am still reticent to give you a firm number, I do share your thoughts. An RFP just should not take a year, anything close to a year. Six months is a good stab. I'd like to see even better than that.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I just, you know, with this number, I just don't, I want to not create incentives for folks to find different ways of doing either emergency, sole source, or piggyback. So I'm glad you have that focus, and y'all are working to it. The final thing I'll say is, I appreciate the flow chart. I can't imagine what a 100-step flow chart would look like, but I'm, because this...
You don't want to see that.
No, I don't think, but I would also just nudge y'all a little bit, you know, if there were one step to add back in, and it's at the beginning, I like the focus on the pre-planning, I still encourage you, your staff, your teams, to kind of survey and inventory multiple departments that might, could use that same procurement, so that we get an omnibus one going out first versus this one where, again, I've preached on this a lot, that we did it for one department, it was $200,000, then two years later, it is a $200 million contract because everybody piled onto it. That work, you know, I think needs to be incorporated into the front end.
It is. It absolutely is. Having that pre-planning process, it's a collaborative process. It gives us the room to look into the need that's come before us, and we already know and are asking questions of even the agencies that are with us, bringing that need, whether they know of other agencies that could use this service. So we've already started down that road. We probably got about 12 procurements in the planning process, and one or two of them, I know, are looking to expand the agencies that are at the table for that very reason.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, it should be pretty easy to research because most of these contracts are repeats.
Yes.
And then you can just track the amendments along the way, where we just added two, added five.
Or the contracts, right?
Yeah. So, yeah. Well, this is great. I appreciate the update. Very encouraged by what you had to report. And Mr. Chair, I yield.
Mr. Strangish.
Yes, sir. I got a question and then a comment. The emergency in-flight, those are the ones that we get to where it's month-to-month, six-month extension or nine-month extension?
No, I do have the information on those two. They are, one for elevator modernization. I think that one just came before FEC last cycle, potentially. And then there's, the second one is on cleanup and spill remediation inside buildings. That one's tracking at about 31 days, still active.
So hopefully, like all the rest of the charts here, those are going down to where we happen to do those?
They certainly will.
Okay.
Because I agree, there's no reason an emergency needs to be a long period of time to contract.
And then the comment is, just thank you. We met for the first and last time when you first came on board and you said you wanted to make some changes.
Yes.
I see those changes taking place. I am not, I'm not where I think we need to be, but the exciting part is, you're not where we think we need to be as well, so I love to hear that. So just thank you to you and your team, and especially on the front end. We know that some of our internal stakeholders started off with the wrong RFP and the wrong things in mind, so thank you for working with them on the front end.
Yes, sir.
So you cannot get those 300 or 400 questions.
Yes, sir.
But more importantly, thank you for adding some type of cadence. I mean, we used to put RFPs out to where questions needed to be in at Thanksgiving, and no one is going to do that. So just thank you, and you and your team.
Well, thank you, and thank you to my team as well, from me, so.
I've got a couple of questions and then a request. So as I've often remarked, your department, in a very real way, can only be as good as the user departments with whom you have to partner. How would you characterize, and I take it that's an evolutionary process that you're bringing, how's that working?
So far, so good. We are at the very beginning. The agencies seem willing to go through the planning process. I think they get the fact that it's taken far too long, and a large part of that is not planning for it. And so the ones that are at the table are excited to be at the table. But I will say that, and this happens in DOP as well, the old thinking is still very present. So there's a lot of discussion to sort of pull people to a new way of thinking. And so we're very much going through that right now.
So one part of this process that we often overlook is what happens after we pass something at full council. We tend to think, well, we've blessed it, so the process is over. Now, in the past, the signature process has been a life of its own, and with DocuSign, it seems to this layperson that should be a day. But where are you with that?
We are, I think, making progress. Right now, I think the system's at about 14 to 15 days to cycle through all the city signatures. Would love to improve that, but that's, from what I understand, a huge improvement over the past.
It is. And you are not responsible for chasing everyone around to get them to sign either.
That's true, but we do have a matrix team that works extremely closely with the agencies, and so we will certainly utilize them to put a bug in somebody's ear in the agency to go ahead and get something processed.
Okay. And then finally, I would like to see the original version of this, because I promise I will have it framed and hanging in my office for my successor.
Yes, sir. Wow.
Anyone else? All right, Commissioner, thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
All right. Could you sound our first reads?
Item number one, 2501540, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to amend ordinance 2401491, adopted by the City Council on October 7th, 2024, and approved as per City Charter Section 2-403 on October 16th, 2024, to provide that the contracted dollar amount listed therein shall be an annual amount not to exceed $1,027,327.00 and for other purposes. Item number two, 2501541, an ordinance by the Finance Executive Committee to clarify that the contracted amount shall not to exceed $3,097,132.60. For agreement, number listed here, Citywide Preventative Maintenance Program for HVAC Services with Aris MEP, Inc., to provide HVAC preventative maintenance services for various departments, listed in Resolution 24R4508, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on November 18th, 2024, and approved as per the City Charter, Section 2-403, on November 27th, 2024, shall be an annual amount. To waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in Division 4 of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, to authorize the mayor who is designated to enter into Amendment Number Two of the agreement, to add additional funding on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management for the Department of Watershed Management in an amount not to exceed $1,750,000.00 annually. All contracted work should be charged to and paid from accounts listed. Item number three, 2501542, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee waiving the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of Atlanta. City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, to authorize the mayor or is designated to execute the First Amendment to the agreement listed here with GovConnection, Inc., DBA Connection Plus Public Sector Solutions, on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information Management, to extend the term of the agreement for 1,077 days effective December 19th, 2025, through November 30th, 2028, in an amount not to exceed blank. All contracted work to be charged to, paid from, the department organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number four, 2501543, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee waiving the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to ratify services rendered in connection with cooperative purchasing agreement, FC10592, Citywide Office Printer, MFDS Supplies and Services with Xerox Corporation, and to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute the Sixth Amendment to the agreement on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information Management, to extend the term for a period not to exceed one year retroactively effective from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,276,284.00. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein. And item number five, 2501544, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute special procurement agreement blank with blank on behalf of the Department of Finance pursuant to Section 2-1191.1 of the Atlanta City Code of... retroactively effective from June 24, 2025 for a term of three years in an amount not to exceed blank to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement beginning June 24, 2025. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. If there's no objections, let's go first to held item 31 on page 14. That is the audit on the Beltline SSD. As you recall, the Beltline people were not here, and as we all know, we'd love to give audit subjects the opportunity to respond to anything in the audit, and then also it's important to give us the opportunity to ask any questions. So without further ado, then, let's take up 25C0090, a communication from Donald Penovi, CPA, Chair of the Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit report on the Beltline SSD Financial Review 2025. And we've all been recopied on the slide deck. So if we could have the Beltline folks, and Ms. Noble, I see you back there, if you could come up in case we have any questions from you. I don't think we need to go back through this again, but we can just kind of get to the response, your responses and any we might make, beginning with the question we always ask audit subjects, just what's your response to the audit?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ruben Burks. I am Chief Operating Officer for the Atlanta Beltline, Inc., hoping to answer any questions or concerns that you might have. I've got Whitney Foster with me. She's our Director of Finance and Accounting and also Ken Neighbors, Legal Counsel. So let's see if we can answer any questions specific.
Okay. Do you have any questions or objections to any of the audit content?
No, we do not. We do not have any specific objections to the audit.
Okay. Questions or comments? I have a few. Thank you for being here. So one of the most striking, well, first of all, it's a remarkably clean audit, so kudos.
Thank you.
We are used to seeing, we're not used to seeing audits this clean, to be honest. But there are some questions we'd love the opportunity to ask. One of the most startling things in here is the assertion that property tax revenue projections are running five years ahead of schedule. Is that accurate? And if so, to what do you attribute that?
Ken Neighbors, McGuire Woods, outside council for the Atlanta Beltline, Inc.
Supposed to have been given copies.
Ready?
Copies were emailed to the members, but no printed copies have been provided.
All right, ready. Through the chair. So the process for coming up with the revenue projections for any land-based tax regime are to be conservative. They really plan out the growth over a 30-year period, so that kind of affects a smoothing. And so here, you know, when you, when they take that conservative view, because their reputation and their licenses are on the line, right, sometimes you have outperformance. So in the earlier years, I think that is correct, right? They forecast scenarios of 2% annual appreciation. Actually, they did three scenarios, 0%, 2%, and 4.5% annual appreciation, right? And then you typically settle on something that is included in the offering document. In this case, it was a private placement. And so those forecasts really weren't designed to true up to the penny. They're designed to be conservative, leave some coverage, because the last thing you want to do is over-project, under-perform, and have debt service shortfalls.
And how is that money being put to work?
So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So any of the excess increment is being used first to pay down the bonds? Anything beyond that, once you hit the coverage factor, would be used towards construction in the R area?
I just have a couple more. So, according to the auditor, almost all prior recommendations have been implemented, and the ones that have have been written down. One that apparently hasn't is, quote, "lay out a reporting framework in the memorandum of understanding which includes specific SSD data." What does that mean? Maybe that's a question for the auditor.
Yeah, I know one of the items that the auditor mentioned was producing a report with Invest Atlanta, and I think talked about that.
I think this actually recovered some ground that we covered in the 2022 audit. I believe that refers to really providing a couple of things, right, which are in the MOU, and we're happy to bolster it up. But in the MOU, they're required to report out the actual SSD collections versus projections, and then also the uses are actually, so at the end of the day, we cover the amount of collections of the SSD levy versus projections, the balance and use of the monies within the discretionary fund. That's where, that's the bottom of the bucket, as they call it. When everything flushes through, you pay debt service, cover your costs, right? It goes through the discretionary fund. And so there is now required to be periodic and other reporting out on those things. I think that's what the request was for.
Okay, and here comes the auditor.
Let me just pull up the recommendation. So our intent here was to give the City Council information to answer questions like the question you had, Mr. Shook, of how much revenue is, you know, more than expected, what's happening to the excess, things like that. Because the council has the ability to change the levy if necessary, if money's coming in more quickly and is no longer needed. But if all the money goes into the discretionary fund, the council really no longer has any way to influence that.
Just one last question that's going to make everyone with a financial accounting background here faint. Any discussion about a property tax decrease? Bringing in more money than you thought you would.
Yeah. I will, I will be the bearer of bad news here. The issue really is, you know, if we're relying on, which we are, to complete the trail federal funding, right, that's not a guarantee. As a matter of fact, we've lost some of that as a Beltline, the Beltline in particular. And so I would, I would, that's a policy and a business decision. I would counsel hesitation if the goal is to complete the Beltline and carry on its construction mandate. But that's, again, I just want to make sure that's on the table, that even though we're overperforming here, there have been some revenue losses that are no fault of the fine people in this room.
Understood. And going back to the imposition of this and the increase that was some years ago, the reason for it that was most often stated was, well, we need to do this to stick to the original schedule, which, to me, and I'll just say it again for what it's worth, I always thought and continue to think was a totally artificial deadline with no real consequences. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Wong.
So, yeah, I wanted to kind of jump on that. I don't necessarily have an issue with accumulating increment, but I need to understand a little better what the vetting process is and then making sure that it is at least in line with the original intent when the SSD was set up. I, you know, I've been a pretty vocal, I don't want to say critic, but I just, I'm leery of, like, the West Side, some of these other tads that have just become piggy banks for what comes shiny and new, and we just don't have another funding source that may or may not be aligned with the original intent. So assure me a little bit about process and alignment with original objectives.
Before we talk about, Whitney's going to talk about the budgetary process, I think that's where you really get the line of sight and, I guess, the check and balance. But at the end of the day, the SSD levy, that realization can only be expended within the SSD, right? So that's free.
Actually, no, only within the ORA boundaries, not even the SSD. And I want to get to that in a second, too.
Bond proceeds. So when it comes down to the discretionary fund, that's free cash flow, right? And so it is, it is unencumbered from the restrictions on the bonds. ORA can only issue bonds and finance projects with inside of the urban redevelopment area. We had a little piece that was outside, right? And so at the end of the day, the SSD levy that is not the result of bond proceeds can be spent anywhere in the SSD. So that's actually a very favorable fact. The bond proceeds must be expended only in the AUR. You're spot on.
Again, so process, though, in terms of excess increment and how it's deployed, just someone tell me what the governance structure looks like for that.
Yeah, so anything for the construction fund can only be spent in certain areas, northwest, south side, as well as some on the west side. And currently, the northwest is the area that is giving us the most issue, just because there's no, you know, rail corridor as there was before. So we are ensuring that money from the construction fund is only being spent in those areas, as you'll kind of see from the audit as well, too.
Okay, let's, let me ask this a different way. So, I see Amanda coming up.
So, we did find in the audit that no money has yet been moved to the discretionary fund.
Okay.
So, so far, and that's what she's talking about, how the money so far, and we agree, has been spent as intended. So he's asking how, what the governance is for the discretionary fund.
Okay. So there is a calculation for that, but once money is moved to the discretionary fund, it'll, again, only be spent in the areas within the R area.
Does it at least require a Beltline Board approval before deployment or expenditure?
I'm not sure if there's a specific approval for it, but we do present it like we would the construction bond as far as spend for what's been happening to the SSD Advisory Board and, again, to you guys as well.
Interesting. Okay. All right, I'll, I can loop with you all offline on that one. The second point I wanted to make, though, is that the, the bond funds can only be spent within the ORA boundary. And, Mr. Neighbors, I think I would disagree with you. I don't think it's just a little piece of the SSD that falls outside of that. It's a pretty significant one, particularly with regard to the increment that is generated. And a lot of that's in my district. So, but I did want to acknowledge that I did have a great conversation with Beltline folks that assured me that there was plenty of philanthropic dollars that have been deployed such that there is equitable investment across the entire Beltline area. So I at least wanted to acknowledge and thank you all for giving me that level of comfort for the pieces that are in my district. So, thank you. Mr. Chair, I yield.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sorry, I'm still playing catch-up on this legislation. The SSD portion, you were saying that, could you please again?
Yeah, so the SSD encompasses the entire Beltline loop, but then when they went to set up the bond financing for it, they did it through ORA. And it's limited in that it can only be spent in the boundaries of ORA, which isn't, does not cover the entire Beltline piece. It leaves a little bit hanging out outside of the bond, that boundary. And most of that is in my district. And so there was a commitment at the time to make sure that they found other funds that were not, didn't not have that same restriction, i.e. philanthropic dollars, to continue to invest in the Beltline, the trails and all that. So like Cox Foundation, Woodruff Foundation have come in, and they've kind of allocated it in a way to make up for that difference. It's mostly in the northeast, over to the northwest segment of it.
So is this, this was not the paper that initially came up? We were discussing the concern about impact fees being actually taken out of the areas. Great, okay. That was my concern. Thank you. And that's it.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, Beltline, thank you for coming in. Auditors, thank you for coming back. Motion is to accept and file. Second by one, let's.
The vote is open. Seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, the ayes have it. So order that takes us to ordinances for second reading, first of which is 2501508, ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the ordinance listed, adopted by the City Council on the date listed and approved as per the charter section listed on that date listed to update parcel tax ID numbers and for other purposes. I will second that. Does anyone need to hear from the CFO? There's no budgetary impact here. All right, let's open the vote.
That vote is open. Vote is closed.
Thank you. Ayes have it. 2501509, this is an ordinance by Finance Exec, authorizing mayor on behalf of the city to execute all appropriate documents that would grant Georgia Power Company for an amount not less than $377,500 for utility easements located at the addresses listed and to permit Georgia Power Company to go in upon, along, across, under, and through the properties defined in the easements, waiving the section of the code listed here and for other purposes. Does anyone need a presentation? Mr. Hillis.
Thanks. I'm somewhat familiar with this, but it's been a number of months since I've heard from Dean.
Yes, sir.
And the, it states the exhibits are in Elms, but I do not see them, at least from where I can access. So I would, wouldn't like to see those. I don't know, do we have those? Jared?
And also, just, I mean, while we're waiting on that, as to, we're with the delays of this, because this project has actually already happened, and we're stating in the legislation that it's, we're needing to do this to allow Georgia Power to do this project.
Yes, sir. So, good afternoon, City Council Chair and members. My name is Pam Hooks, and I am Senior Project Manager for Dean Real Estate Portfolio Division. So this particular legislation or ordinance by the Finance Executive Committee would actually authorize the mayor or his designated to convey those four utility easements to Georgia Power in an amount not less than the $377,500. So these easements, the purpose of these easements were to be to upgrade the transmission and underground lines in the area. And of course, as you said, Councilman Hillis, this has been a long process. I think they started at last April, and they were giving a license agreement to actually go on site to start some of the preliminary work, and that included part of a tree ordinance, which Georgia Power did pay to the city in an amount of $274,000, I think it was, as part of a tree ordinance to get started on the work. So now, these easements will allow Georgia Power to renew and rebuild overhead and underground transmission lines or what they would call utility facilities in the area. They also helped to upgrade the park there. Now, this address is at 2101 Collins Drive, also known as Spinks Collins Park. So they actually added some lighting to the park as part of the agreement as well. So right now, the easements would be for them to actually upgrade electrical transmissions, distribution, communications lines, along with conduance, anchors, and guy wires, and to assist in the disposal and underneath, the undergrowth of trees and shrubs.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Wong to pull back his motion to approve. I'll make a substitute. So I'll make a, I need some more information than that, and would like to hear from the Commissioner and also see the documents that we're not able to see here. So I'm going to make a motion to approve on condition.
Yes, sir.
That myself and the Commissioner have a meeting. It can be over the phone.
Okay.
And then also that those exhibits be emailed to me.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Since we have an off week next week, you have a little time to work on that. So that is my motion.
Thank you. And if you need anything else from Dean, just let us know.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll be happy to second that. Any other questions or comments? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. And that vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays, one abstention.
All right, thank you. 2501524, needs a substitute. I'll make that motion. Second by one. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open. The vote is open. Vote is closed.
Tonight's substitute is before us and it reads as follows. An ordinance by Boone is substituted by Finance Exec, authorizing the CFO to amend the FY26 budget in the amount of $50,000 and zero cents relating to the Atlanta Commission on Women Trust Fund and for other purposes. There's been a motion to prove. Unsubstitutes, been properly seconded. Questions or comments? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed. Seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, thank you. 2501527, it's an ordinance by Shook to ratify Mayor Andre Dickens' executive order directing at the Chief of Police, Commissioner of City Planning, Director of the Mayor's Office of Film, Entertainment and Nightlife, Commissioner of Department of Transportation, Chief of Staff, Commissioner of Parks and Rec, and the Director of the Mayor's Office of Special Events, except no new applications for permits related to outdoor vending on public or private property, permits for activities which may impede upon the right-of-way or require closures thereof and permits to authorize the conduct of large gatherings and outdoor festivals where such permitted activity shall occur from June 11th to July 19th of next year, which is the FIFA operational period within the area designated in this order for the purpose of providing for adequate strategic planning by the city and other public and private entities integral to the successful hosting of the FIFA 26 World Cup, directing that the Chief of Staff, Commissioner of Parks and Rec, and Director of the Mayor's Office of Special Events shall temporarily require the submission of all large gathering or outdoor festival permits for such outdoor events occurring through the FIFA operational period citywide, no earlier than 150 days prior to such events to ensure an adequate allocation of public safety and other city resources, and providing for exceptions for assemblies for certain outdoor events with priority status established by city ordinance, and for street sidewalk and right-of-way closures which shall be necessary due to emergencies and for other purposes.
Good afternoon, Austin Wagner, Deputy Chief of Staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the committee. So we, as the administration, put forward this executive order that the mayor signed, just as it says, for a variety of reasons, both strategic, logistical, safety, security, to ensure that the, the operations of the FIFA World Cup during the summer of 2026 be able to go off without a hitch. So there's, there's two basic zones. Worked very closely with Amber Robinson from the Law Department on this to ensure that we are as narrow as possible as we could with this order and then the proposed legislation in front of you. The short version is there's basically two zones. Inside that zone, which there should be a map attached as an exhibit, I also printed copies for you if you're not able to access that through, through Elms right now. Within that zone, there's effectively a moratorium on these permits that are listed within that zone during what we're calling the FIFA operational period, which is June 11th through July 19th of next year. Outside of that zone, the only real change is in the timing in which we'd be able to accept applications. And that just allows us to kind of extend the period in which we can determine resource allocation and things of that nature. So typically, you could apply within a year. This legislation would change that to 150 days out, which is still enough time to, you know, do all the things that are necessary for the event, but allows us enough time to ensure that we've got all our, all our ducks in a row as it comes to the planning and logistics for FIFA World Cup. Happy to explain further. I see there's a few folks that have questions, and I'm ready and willing.
First of which is Ms. Dramus.
Okay, who created these zones?
The, the map?
Yes, the map.
It was a joint effort, both in conversations with the variety of stakeholders and the FIFA coordination team, as well as internally in the administration and with the Law Department, and tried to keep it as narrow as we could.
The neighborhood leadership that was included on this coordination team is who?
I mean, there was no coordination necessarily with NPUs or leadership on that. This is just trying to keep the zone as tight around the stadium as we can.
So once again, we're planning for people instead of with people. And this is an ongoing conversation I've been having for years now, so I hope none of this has been unexpected by anyone across the hall. You have even reached partially into the neighborhood to one of our world-class parks that has always been used by the neighborhood, but even that is cornered off. So I guess the real question is, at what point do the people that live in Castleberry Hill, Vine City, English Avenue, the ones that have to deal with everything that the Atlanta Sports Council bring to these facilities, when do they have a voice, an opportunity to participate in everything that you say will take place inside of these zones you have placed on top of them?
Understood. And the intention here, council member, is, is really the opposite of that. The information that we had been getting and the request that we had is that there were certain groups of folks and individuals and corporations that essentially wanted to get permits for everything that we had inside the city. There were folks that wanted to get a permit for every single park, every single city facility, city hall, anything they could get a hands-on, and then effectively turn around and make a profit off of that, sell those permits, sell advertising, sell everything else within there. The intention here actually is to try to get a handle on that, right? So that the people can potentially access this in a better way, right? So there's the logistical concerns from street closures, trying to ensure that people aren't closing streets that aren't necessary because they're getting a permit for a special event at Rodney C. Cook Park. There's the security components of, you know, if we have a proposed 30,000-person event at, you know, again, using Cook Park as another example, while there's a fan fest down the road that we're, you know, is in planning, and obviously the games that are happening, there's logistical and security nightmares that, that come from that. This isn't the end of it, right? I mean, the, the conversation is how do we, give us enough time to strategically determine how can we move forward with all these plans, with the security plans, with the logistical plans, and allow the community to try to access, right? So the, the intention here, while it may seem like we're limiting folks from trying to have access and we're trying to keep people out, that the reality is, we want to make sure that the people who are in Atlanta, who are, live here and have to deal with these things, can still access and use the city in a way, you know, that, that they intend to, whether they want to participate in the games or not, right? And I imagine a number of people will want to be a part of FIFA, will want to be a part of the fan fest, and a number of people will not. What I think would have happened without this, right, is that somebody would have come in, done permits on the parks, and, you know, made whatever money off the backs of everyone around and caused more nightmares for the people who are actually living here and trying to participate in just their normal daily life.
But thank you for that. I hear that. I appreciate that, but, and we will probably have to have a conversation after this. At what point will my residents have an opportunity to give their input? And we can get that at a later date.
Yeah, we can discuss that for sure.
Okay, thank you. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My question's kind of short and sweet. At what level of leadership gets to decide what, what is an emergency?
What is an emergency?
Yeah, there is an exception for things that shall be necessary due to emergencies. Is that a department leader? Is that a deputy COO? Is that the COO? Is that the mayor? Who decides that something is an emergency? And a permit should be issued?
If I can, I would ask law to opine on that. I'm assuming emergency would be defined in the code somewhere on what we would consider an emergency.
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. Actually, I think that would be a determination, it's not, not so much a legislative determination, it would be a determination made at the top levels of leadership if it was a public safety issue. I would believe that would be a conversation with the Chief of Police, the COO, the mayor, that level of leadership to determine what would be an emergency under those circumstances. But of course, we, it's not something that could be legislated because you, you don't know what would be considered emergent until it happened, so.
Right, and I'm not asking for legislation. I'm just saying, I'm just wondering what level decides that, you know, if there, if something happens, does, you know, the department leader decide, or is that something that they need to run by? I mean, when this plan was put together, I would expect that would be something that would be kind of at least put into this legislation, given it only covers a specific period of time. Or are we just going to have, you know, 12 department leaders going around declaring emergencies to issue permits to vendors and contractors, et cetera?
Well, I had certainly, at a, at a certain point, that's a policy decision, but considering that upon ratification, this moratorium will be law for the period of time in which it is applied, I wouldn't suspect that low-level decisions could be made to supersede the policy as set forth therein.
All right, thanks. That concludes my questions.
Respect your right.
Thank you. Could you elaborate on it being a policy decision?
Yes, decisions concerning who within the executive branch can do certain things are decisions of the executive. And so I, as a lawyer, can't opine as to who the mayor and his team would designate to be able to perform a function that is delegated to the executive, which, to Councilmember Hillis's point, here, the determination of emergency is something that we left to the discretion of the experts in that, in that area and the executive. But as to who specifically would be able to do that, would be a policy decision to be made by the executive branch.
Okay, sorry, when you said policy decision, my assumption was the council body, given, so it's policy legislative? No, it's determined by the executive what is deemed an emergency and how these resources are spent? Is that correct?
I didn't, no, I didn't say that it couldn't be something that's legislated. Of course, the executive branch, as well as the legislative branch are capable of making policy decisions. Here, it would, as I was stating earlier, due to the very nature of determination of an emergency, it's difficult to, at this point, prior to any such emergency occurring, legislate exactly how that determination would have to be made. Because it'd be very difficult to predict all potential emergencies.
Understood, thank you.
All right, so I just want to understand, this, this essentially establishes a freeze, a moratorium on any permit. But I think what you said is that it really is more to buy time for y'all to figure out what the process will be to evaluate that and then eventually issue permits, potentially.
Right. There'll be some, sorry.
And so I, this is just an interim control, so that at some point, we're going to lift this and then there'll be a new policy put in place for that, for this geography and then the process, right?
Yeah, likely. I think portions of it will, will likely continue throughout, right? I mean, street closures, obviously create, you know, nightmares there. We want to, again, I mean, the mayor said consistently, we want this to happen with Atlanta, not to Atlanta, right? So as far as parks, other special events, other things, when we can understand, get closer to the point where we understand what teams are coming, we're not even at the draw point yet, that comes in December, who's going to be playing here, what types of events are sort of planned around this, right? There is opportunity to, you know, augment to ensure that the people can access in the right ways, right? We don't want to keep it so that no one can access some of these areas, right? But downtown, as we all know, I mean, just the influx of people coming, right? There, there are certain parameters that we have to put in place, and we want to be flexible as we go forward, but some of these things will definitely stay in place as we go.
So stepwise, again, it, there will be some sort of lifting of the moratorium replaced by a new policy and procedure around all these things that are listed within the geographic area, some of which may not ever be opened back up, but some, some of them could be with new guidelines.
Yes, at some point, there will be an augmentation to this, just even for, you know, necessary things for us to put in.
I got you, okay. Yeah, so I do think it is critically important to Councilmember Dramus's point that
Yes.
in developing what replaces this, or what the opening back up of some of them are, that they, that their voices heard.
Yes.
Because I get the notion of let's block everybody out now to buy us time to develop it, but whatever replaces needs to be something that works for everybody, so.
Completely agree. And, and as a point on that with community access, just want to be clear, it's in the legislation that the, the carve-outs that we normally have for our permitting processes for these kind of legacy historic events, and I think that even is for, you know, every, if it's, I forget if it's two or three years, folks having the same permit will be there, right? So for example, like Peachtree Road Race, other things like that that happen on an annual basis are already carved out of this. So, and if somebody already has a permit for an event during that time, you know, that's not being taken away, right? So this is, this is forward-looking and not a retroactive removal of any licenses or permits that already exist.
You know, I'll just comment by saying that, I mean, this is here, we haven't seen anything like this since the Olympics. This is not a Super Bowl, it's not a Major League All-Star game, it's not a College Football World Series. It's exponentially more than that. I mean, what I, what I see this as principally is an attempt to prioritize access to, you know, the major parks and other public venues in a way that supports FIFA-related activities. That said, I'm not colorblind, I, I know gray when I see it. This has been adequately pointed out, there is gray here. Is there, so my question to everyone in the room is, is there a way to formalize a process by which dialogue along the lines of the questions and concerns that have been asked here are part of this, are part of the analysis and decision-making process?
Do you mean within the legislation or just in?
Yeah, within the order here.
I mean, certainly that's possible. I don't think that's been contemplated necessarily in this process yet, to formalize it in the legislation. Just number of unknown factors on, from planning purposes, but obviously, we're, you know, want to and are willing to engage in that process. But as far as the legislation, I'd be hesitant to say at this point, if we could put a date on it, if that's the type of.
So I see Ms. Robinson deep in thought.
Yes, so I think as you yourself and Councilmember Juan noted, the, the point here, as well as Deputy Chief of Staff Wagner, the point here would be to freeze the status quo to prevent people from rushing and securing all of the available permits before any sort of strategic planning could occur. As with any moratorium, if we were doing a moratorium, let's say, concerning like zoning or, or anything else, in order to freeze the status quo, to allow for policy to be developed and implemented, it would cut against the purpose of the moratorium if we were to set forth exactly when, let's say, it would end, or exactly what the process would be laid out to get to the end of the moratorium, if there are, if there is going to be such an end. Because anybody looking to, let's say, flood design with applications, would then just be able to circle the date and do so. So I, you know, whether or not you would like to add more requirements or more things to the order, the order of the legislation, obviously, it would be a policy decision, but I would caution that the more you signal, the more it undermines the purpose of the moratorium in and of itself.
Okay. Well, I mean, if I'm being honest, then I also have to add that anything we would add would be, would not exactly, you know, be with the full force of the law. I mean, it would, it would in effect be a resolution kind of a statement, rather than an ordinance kind of a statement. I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic as to the conditions with which the administration is trying to get out in front of, but I'll, I'll leave it right there and see what other comments people have. Otherwise, I'm going to make a motion to approve for discussion purposes, seconded by one. And I mean, and, and obviously, concerned district people are going to need to, you know, involve yourselves. Additional questions or comments? All right, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Six yeas, zero nays, one abstention.
The eyes have it. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2501532 is an ordinance by Ms. Bakhtiari to provide for the annexation of property located at 942 Gresham Avenue in Atlanta, Georgia, into the corporate limits of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, pursuant to the 100% method to extend the boundaries of the Atlanta Independent School System to notify the DCA of the state of such annexation and further purposes. We're going to need to hold this to let the companion pieces catch up. So that's my motion. Second by Bakhtiari. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, let's take the next two together. 2501535 is an ordinance by Ms. Collins authorizing a donation in amount not to exceed $5,000 from the post three at large carry-forward account to the Atlanta Preservation Center for the Herndon Home Museum Restoration Project, as indicated by the cited section of the city charter and for other purposes. 2501536 is also authored by Ms. Collins. It is a donation in amount not to exceed $2,500 from the post three at large carry-forward account to the Morris Brown College pursuant to the same section of the city charter. And I will move approval of both, second by Juan. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
All right, on to resolutions. 25R3905, resolution by Ms. Overstreet authorizing mayor or as does need to execute a sole-source agreement for the SSP indicated telehealth kiosk with OnMed pursuant to the section of the charter of the code listed here on behalf of HR, a term of three years with no renewal options in amount not to exceed $2,520,000. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera. And we do not yet have the Ipro report. And so I'll make a motion to hold it. Second by Bakhtiari. If there's nothing else, let's open the vote. Yes?
Thank you. Hey, Commissioner. No, I just had a question for when this does come back before us, after the Ipro report is done. Obviously, you know how much I love providing our employees with more access to health care. But I do have a couple of questions, and I understand not answering them now because the paper is held. But I'm hoping that you'll be able to provide more information about how these telehealth services are going to protect their users. I think right now in this political climate when we have, we have people that are supposed to be leading the country talking about things like criminalizing autism. So I'm better understanding that. If it's going to be provided to City of Atlanta employees, are they still going to use their insurance benefits? Just a better understanding of where these are going to be placed? How many will we be buying? How people's information is going to be protected? How we're going to ensure their privacy? Is what they order going to be tracked? And who will that information be given to, if to anyone, so?
Right. I mean, I can't say initially that these kiosks, did you want me to wait to answer that till it comes back or?
I believe I'll defer to Mr. Chair about how, and the author, about how they would like to proceed.
Well, certainly, the kiosk will be HIPAA compliant. I want to make you aware of that, certainly. So in the normal way that information is protected concerning health and all that, the kiosk will be subject to HIPAA. So, but if you wanted additional information about that, I guess I will look into it. But it will certainly be HIPAA compliant in the same way that our Health and Wellness Center and all those have to comply with HIPAA regulations. Also, as of this point, there hadn't been a decision about where to actually place the kiosk. So by the time I come back, I have to tell, perhaps, we'll know that information.
Yeah, I just, understanding the severity, what they can deal with, obviously, if you're having to show something on your body to a doctor, is it going to have adequate privacy so that employee can do that? And how is it going to be set up? And just the types of doctors will be utilizing and the extent of the services they can provide.
Absolutely.
And how, if employees, if it's covered by your insurance or if they're going to have to have an additional, if there's going to have to be additional charges.
Will do, Councilmember. Thank you.
You so much.
All right, thank you. That takes us to 25R3906, resolution by Mr. Hillis authorizing City of Atlanta to make a donation to Agapi Community Centers, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for the provision of youth and family support services in the amount of $50,000 pursuant to the cited section of the city charter. And this is, this is already a budgeted item. Mr. CFO, is that correct?
Yes. This is already part of the, Mohammed Paul, CFO, this was already part of the budget approval process in the approved budget amendment section of the FY26 budget.
All right, that's what I thought. Motion approved by Hillis, which I will second. If there's nothing else, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. And that vote is closed.
All right, the ayes have it. 25R3971 is resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor as does need to execute a special procurement agreement of which is listed, truck repairs with Jetvac Equipment Company, LLC, pursuant to the code section cited here on behalf of Watershed, a term of one year in an amount not to exceed $500,000. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the sources indicated.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councilmember, my name is Robert Horton. I'm the Director for the Office of Asset and Accountability with Watershed. This legislation is for us to maintain our Sewell Combo trucks. Currently, we have nine that were purchased and are being repaired by Jetvac. That contract ran out, and now we're trying to secure until we can renew that contract some money so that they won't be down and we can get them repaired.
So that's, in effect, exotic equipment that we can't do in-house?
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right, questions or comments? Motion to approve by Juan, and second by Hillis. Let's open the vote. What?
No, real question. I'm glad that you have, are getting exotic equipment. Didn't know that was a classification. But a question was, happy to hear this is happening because I know that we have ever-growing demands on Watershed. How many of these vehicles do we currently have out? And how many will this add to the fleet that we do have?
Okay, well, this is just for repairs of the ones that we do have. And these are just nine that we do have. We have a total of 23, but they're by other manufacturers.
Got it, got it, got it. I understand now. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, that takes us to 25R3973, resolution by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor to execute a sole-source agreement, number of which is listed, Internet Circuit Redundancy Support Services at the airport with Verizon Business Network Services, LLC, pursuant to the section, code section listed here on behalf of aviation for a term of three years with three one-year renewal term options in an amount not to exceed $1,297,815.84. My motion is to hold as we do not yet have the Ipro report. Second by Mr. Juan. Let's vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
All right, and we have a held paper, and that is number 33 on page 15. This is 2401309, ordinance by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in the cited code section, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to ratify services rendered in connection with the FC indicated Commercial Property Management Services Agreement with the Shopping Center Group, LLC, for property management services. I was unaware that was ready.
Yeah.
Excellent. We'll take that up in our next sitting. Which brings us to a referral from our friends at CDHS. This is 2501490, ordinance by CDHS authorizing the CFO to amend the FY26 Department of City Planning General Fund Budget and the FY26 Capital Fund, Capital Finance Fund Budget by transferring an amount not to exceed $450,000 by anticipating and appropriating funds to and from the accounts listed for the purpose of project work related to the Riverland Corridor/Chattahoochee Brick Company design planning efforts and for other purposes.
Hello, this is Andrew Walter with the Department of City Planning. And as the legislation says, this money is to be used for the planning and design of the Chattahoochee Brick and Chattahoochee Riverlands Corridor. That work is underway right now, but that's going to extend past this fiscal year. And that's the reason that the funds need to be moved into a capital account.
Motion to approve by Mr. Hillis, which I will second. If there's nothing else, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Does that bring us to the end of our agenda, Ms. Ravens?
Yes, it does.
Any thoughts, musings, witticisms, et cetera? Saying none words, Sharon. Thank you.